Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole for the Sunshine Coast Regional District for Thursday, April sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is nine thirty-two in the morning, and I'd like to call this meeting to order and acknowledge that the Sunshine Coast Regional District is located within the traditional territories of the Sea Shelt and Squamish Nations. Uh, we have an agenda in front of us today. Directors, are there any changes to the agenda? If not, I look for a motion to adopt as presented. Moved and seconded, all those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And can I have a motion to receive all reports today? Moved, seconded, all those in favor? That is also carried. Thank you very much. All right, moving straight on into our agenda. Uh, first up, we have a presentation for water supply update, so we will turn this over to our staff table.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, and, uh, before, before Shane starts, I just, I was, I just want to, uh, a couple of general comments. Also, welcome everyone in the gallery. It's good to see some people in the seats in the gallery, and I see some, a few attendees online. Welcome to you as well. Uh, just before Shane starts, I was thinking about this, uh, water supply update and, uh, thinking about the C A O update I was writing in the last couple of days for the annual report, and in that annual report update, I was talking a lot about the emergency drought response last year. And it reminded me of some of the comments that K P M G had, uh, the province sent, uh, K P M G in to work with staff last year in the Emergency Operations Center on the drought response. And they work with communities all over B C, and I was thinking of the amazing things and compliments they paid to our staff who had worked so tirelessly to work on the drought response, and I was realizing that over these last two or three years, uh, while what we're going through might not be unique in B C or Canada or the world, frankly, we are fairly unique in the way that we were able to respond to it, and we learned a tremendous amount in three areas over the last two or three years. One was on, uh, how we operate and maintain our facilities. The resilience that's been built into the water system, both in the Chapman system, uh, the use of the siphons, how we've learned to operate the plant at unprecedentedly low water levels, and our ability to share water back and forth with our neighbors in Gibson's over the last couple of years has grown tremendously, and that's built a tremendous amount of resilience into the system. Also, those siphons have increased the amount of water we're able to draw from Chapman tremendously as well, which has done, done a lot to increase the supply available to us over the last couple of years, and the work they've done with Gibson's has increased our supply as well. And the other one is, uh, the work that's been done, that you have done as members of the public, and the work that we've done on the communications and engagement side to help people understand the seriousness of the emergencies we've been going through for the past couple of years and to modify their behavior. We saw lower water usage rates during stage four last year than we'd seen in a long time, and it's a tribute to everybody that, uh, chipped in to try to get through that. Um, and those, those are just some of the things I was thinking about as I was doing my annual report address the other day, and I thought they were appropriate to voice here. And now I'll, uh, hand it over to Shane to lead you through the update.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, C A O. Um, I think I appreciate that, uh, C A O. It was a challenging year last year specifically, so, um, that's, um, but we made it through. And also to note that, uh, we're being contacted by other people because we're now professionals at running siphons. So people are interested in how we operate and, um, uh, design siphons. So today will be, uh, the first water supply update for two thousand and twenty-three. It feels like we just finished, um, updates for last year, and now we're back, back again. Uh, there'll be one a month, um, and through the summer till the fall. The last one hopefully is in September this year. Um, and, uh, this will provide a snapshot of water supply regulations and different initiatives the S C R D is pursuing around water supply. What you see in front of you is a, a map from, uh, Environment Canada. It's a temperature models and, and predicting, uh, the forecasting for this, the next three months. And white on the picture depicts that they don't really know, and we're in the, they don't really know zone. So if it's less than thirty percent, they are predicting, you can see at the bottom there, they predict below normal, near normal, and above normal. And if it's below forty percent in all of those categories, it becomes white. So there's a, there's a very, there's less than forty percent chance of each one of those happening, so I think it's quite uncertain right now. Uh, so they're not, they're not, um, trending strongly in any direction. The, uh, the other thing to note in this, in this model, though, is it's pretty hard to predict whether, and that's what we've heard from Environment Canada, and that when, um, you look at some of these models showing ten days out, they don't really believe them, right? It's, they'll say something like it's a hundred percent for twenty-four hours, fifty percent for seventy-two hours, and not much after that. So that's, uh, looking forward for the next three months. We'll take this with a grain of salt, but, uh, they're saying it's very uncertain. Uh, this is a rainfall data, um, graphics here showing what happens at the Sea Shelt Airport, or has happened at the Sea Shelt Airport. Now, we have to remember that the rain, we noticed the rain quite different at the lake to Sea Shelt at times. We have a rain gauge at our treatment plant. We have a rain gauge at the lake during the summertime, not during the wintertime. Uh, there's quite a bit of snow there right now. It wouldn't get any rain in it anyways. Uh, but this does show, um, if you look at the, the, the five months here, now, it's a little bit confusing. The first two, November and December, obviously don't have this fall's, uh, weather, uh, rainfall in it. I'd love to be able to predict that, but as I say, it's, I probably can't predict this fall's rain. Um, but if you look at the, on the right side of the graph, January, February, and March, that's showing the rainfall that the airport saw in two thousand and twenty-three. And as you may note, two out of the three are lower than last year's. You can also note back in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one in November and January, there's quite a large high number in, in one of the months. So in, in two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, I believe it is, in November, there was quite a high rainfall, and in January of two thousand and twenty, there's quite a high rainfall. And we'll note that when we get to the next screen. So staff, um, to take the snow surveys, staff go up into the watershed, and this is a picture of, uh, I believe the beginning of this week here. One of the staff members up, up the, up in the tetrahedron, and they take the snow surveys from two locations. One in the Edwards Lake, um, watershed, and one in the Chapman watershed, and these were determined years and years ago. Uh, uh, they looked for flat areas that wouldn't be affected by trees nearby, um, wouldn't be affected by wind blowing. So you can get an accurate number every time you go there, and they actually have to snowshoe to the certain spot to get this survey every single time. And as you can see in the screen there, there's a long rod. The way they take a snow survey is they have these hollow tubes. They're, they're about a couple inches wide, and they have little, um, uh, a measurement up the side of them, and they're in one meter lengths. And they get to the snow, and they put a handle on it and pound it in one meter, and then they add another tube, pound it in another meter, all, uh, all the way down to the ground. They pull it out, um, and then they weigh the tube, and the, that gives them the water equivalency of the snow that they measured, and they also can measure the depth that way as well. So you'll see on, on the next couple graphs, that's how they came up with those numbers. Um, um, Sandy, our environmental tech, is, is responsible for this, and she has, always has volunteers to go up with her and participate in the snow survey. So, but along with this, so the temperatures and rainfall that happen now is going to affect the snowpack. So in years past, we've had, you know, heat domes early in the year, and, and it melts their snowpack really quickly. If it rains a lot when it's warm, it melts their snowpack, and generally speaking, there's sort of a rule of thumb that it's about six or seven degrees, uh, cooler up there in the wintertime. So, um, if it's raining heavy and it's fourteen degrees down here, it's probably raining up there and washing our snow away. This coming we, uh, weekend, we're looking at up almost a hundred millimeters of rain, and the lows at night are, um, six or seven, and the highs are, I think, ten or twelve or something in the daytime. So it, it may affect, it's uncertain how it would affect it, but at night, hopefully it's snow. In the daytime, it might be rain. So here's, um, here's the, uh, information that staff were able to get, uh, this, beginning of this week. So you can see in two thousand and twenty-three, uh, like fresh, like four or five days ago, you can see that the snow depth was three hundred and thirty-four centimeters. It's a little bit higher than last year. But then you look at the bottom, and this S W E is the, the, uh, water equivalents of that snow that they weighed, and it's showing that it's slightly lower than last year's water equivalency. So that's the volume of water in the snowpack. So you can look back at, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. Remember I was commenting about how, how there was a lot of snow in one of those months? Look how high the snowpack was at that time of year and the water equivalency. So we didn't get that, um, big, heavy rain, um, this fall or spring. This is, um, Edwards Lake snowpack. So this, that, the last one is Chapman. This is Edwards. Similar, similar ideas. See, there's almost the same water, um, equivalency in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-two, but the snowpack's different, so it must be a fluffier snowpack up there. The depth is there, but the water equivalency is about the same. I think what was interesting, now I'm trying to find my notes here, that the, um, there was only, in Chapman, there was only a one percent increase of snow, um, water equivalency in Chapman, but there was an eight percent increase in Edwards Lake water equivalency. So it shows again how random it can be that we would get more snow in Edwards. And Edwards, um, Lake watershed is quite a bit smaller than Chapman's. So this is a little bit about, um, about the snow surveys again. The Chapman Water System's fundamentally a, a rain-dependent system, so if we don't get the rain in the summers as we have been getting, uh, it's, it causes issues. And historically, the April first measurements has this, uh, the highest snow accumulations. So we're not really expecting any more snow up in the watershed. You know, maybe if we're lucky this weekend, we might get a bit more, but usually that's what we go by. Um, so then again, weather conditions from now until June is going to be, um, telling, and, and as I talked about, hopefully we don't get heavy, warm rain or, um, heat domes. Next survey will be in, uh, May first, and, and usually we, that's where we end. I think last year we went up later. Um, if there's snow on the ground, we'll do another one. So our drought response plan, uh, starts May first every, every year. We go into stage one. And when we go through the summer and the fall, and this last year into the winter practically, we, we go through these, uh, the, we have weekly meetings at least once a week, and we go through these, uh, bullets here on how to determine where we're going to call stages. So it changes as the year goes through. We're obviously not looking at the snowpack in August, but we, at that time, we may be looking at the, um, the usage or the temperatures coming at us in the next week or so, and what we're expecting the plant to need to run at. So again, it's time of year in the snowpack, whatever water's left in the lake. An important one is how fast the lake is going down. That's, uh, one of the important matrixes that we take. Uh, we have the ability to measure that up at the lake, at both lakes. We have, um, solar-operated level indicators at the lake that we can communicate with, and we can also, um, automatically adjust the valves at the lake, uh, through, um, a, a program called SCADA. And, uh, so our operators are adjusting that daily, if not multiple times a day, to maximize the water that we're retaining in the lake. Water conservation communications. So we're, it's, this is an ongoing program that we're working on, and recently we sent out three hundred and twenty-two leak letters and, um, five hundred and fifteen letters to the top water users in the system. Upcoming in April, we'll have mailouts and, uh, advertisements in the newspapers. You can see on the side there, I think we're probably familiar with that, that, um, that page on the, about the water conservation regulations. That's what I believe will be sent out, and on the other side, it gives suggestions on how to save water. So a lot of the leaks, um, we've talked over time about these massive leaks that we found in, in, in throughout the system on private site leaks. Um, most of them have been resolved in this last fall, but, you know, it's sort of related to the E O C, but also the fact that it, this is an ongoing program that we do year-round. It's not just in the summertime, and, um, it's taken a few years to, to get them all addressed, and, and we're working as hard as we can with, um, people to resolve their leaks, and it looks like we're making some headway. This is a picture that I enjoy going up there, but I don't enjoy seeing the siphons like this. This picture shows, uh, this was when it was down quite deep last year. Um, this is, you're standing in the lake bed when you're looking at this. This is probably down about five meters at Chapman Lake. So can, to continue using the siphons this year, we need to, uh, renew the licenses. Two of the licenses are expiring this fall, and, um, they are, um, one that allows us to use an extra million cubic meters a year out of Chapman through the siphons, and, um, uh, the other one is a, a park's use permit that allows us to use the siphons in the park. So that's being submitted by staff, and, um, um, we certainly hope that they get approved for another extension. Along with that, there's, uh, we've requested a letter from the, uh, of support from Sea Shell Nation, and, uh, staff have prepared a letter for the board chair to, uh, send to the province to support our, our application for extension. Church Road Well Field Project. Some of this, some of this presentation is overlapping with the two reports that are on the agenda today. Uh, so I'll just be quick in summarizing these, and, and, uh, when the other reports are presented, maybe more can be discussed. But, um, Church Road Wells, the, the pumps currently in place, uh, will provide approximately three, uh, million liters per day. And, uh, we're, we're looking at, um, uh, getting larger pumps installed by June to enable, uh, closer to the four and a half million, uh, liters a day, um, out of Chat, or Church Road, uh, well system. And, uh, the, the well system is, uh, anticipated to be online by June. We're still working on the permitting. The, um, the, one of the things that, that we're working on with Church Road is that it, it's right next to Soames Creek, and this has been discussed about with other potential well sites, that it has an impact on Soames Creek, and that's very important. And there are fish in that creek, and so staff and our consultants are taking every, every step possible to ensure that nothing happens to the fish when we pull water out of the, uh, the wells, and because they, it has been noted that there is an impact on the creek, and that's, um, again, one of the things that we've discussed in the past about putting wells in near creeks. It, it has a, a long process and a, and a serious implication. Yeah, this is some, some of what I just talked about here. Um, yeah, I, I touched on this. I think I jumped ahead a little bit, but this is talking about the fish again. Environmental flow needs. We're in discussions with the, the province to, uh, try and, uh, have a reduction in the two hundred liters a second minimum year-round for E F N for Chapman Creek. What we're hoping to, the, when the, the, um, this was initiated, it, it really wasn't, um, I don't think at the time thought of, uh, different times of the year. It was just a two hundred liters a minimum year-round. And what we're hoping for is that we can reduce this flow in, say, June or something like that a little bit, or maybe July, when there's no salmon in the creek, to, to conserve that water up at the lake. You know, we're not intending, again, to hurt the fish in the fall, but we're hoping we're, you know, we'll have that water, two hundred liters a second in the fall. That's the, the goal. But, but if, you know, we're looking at, if, if there's no salmon in the creek in June, and we're not doing any, any other impact to the environment, can we reduce it a little bit to conserve that water up at the lake? There's a lot of, uh, more water supply projects on the go. Again, that's in another report in the agenda. But just quickly, water meter installations in Sea Shelt. We have an R F P that's closed, and we're, um, we're working on awarding that. Um, the one thing to note, though, is, is, and I brought this up a, a number of times in committee, that we're, we're challenged with getting, uh, fittings. Uh, ductile iron pipe is almost impossible to find. Uh, they won't be using ductile iron pipe and water meters, but they will be using a lot of fittings, brass fittings. They will be using a lot of, um, inserts, pipes. Uh, meter boxes are really hard to get, so there is going to be a supply chain issue. But staff are, um, really working hard to get at least some meters installed as soon as possible, and, um, we'll, we'll figure that out once the, uh, contract is awarded. Gray Creek Water Treatment Upgrade. This is, this is a study we're doing at Gray Creek. Uh, Gray Creek's been used as a water source for many years, for, I'm not sure when the permit was on, thirty years, thirty, forty years. Uh, but it's only really been used as a secondary source, and it's only been used in good weather times. And what we're hoping to do is, is be able to determine what treatment, um, we could put on the creek to use it more, uh, more, uh, effectively and more, um, able to use it all the time. Right now, if it, if it, if we're using Gray Creek and it rains pretty heavy, we have to turn it off. It's, it gets high turbidity in the creek, and, uh, that's what we're hoping to resolve there. Uh, staff are also looking into more. Last year, we discussed this about, um, like a temporary style treatment process. Could we maybe get that installed this fall? We're looking, looking into that. Um, it'll probably be very costly because it uses three-phase power, but that's aside. Langdale Well Fields, uh, drilling and testing of the wells has taken place, and, uh, we're awaiting some, uh, reports from the consultant. This is a process where they, they, um, put a pump down in the well that they just drilled, and they run it for seventy-two hours, and they take all this, this data, and they take it away, and they determine what we're going to be able to, um, pull out of the well on an ongoing basis without hurting any of the environment. Again, it's right next to Langdale Creek, right? So this is a really sort of exciting time because they're probably going to come back with a number, and that, hopefully that number is a nice big number. Um, that's the stage we're at right now with Langdale. Mary Ann West, uh, there's, these are, this was identified, I believe, as part of the, um, uh, the drilling when we drilled, uh, or test drilled for Soames and, and, um, I mean Church Road and, uh, Mahon. I think it was part of that. We're in discussions with the town of Gibson's to discuss that, if it has an impact on their aquifer. Raw Water Reservoir. Uh, this is, uh, very neat as well. We're, we're doing some geotechnical drilling in this month, and what that will do is determine, uh, if it's really a good spot for a reservoir. We've, we've done a lot of above-ground work. Well, now we're going to start doing it below-ground work. What else are we doing? We could, we could have a hundred bullets on this, but we've put it down to six bullets. With staff, um, as part of our water main capital upgrades, every year we upgrade, uh, water mains that are in, in need of replacement. Staff design- Uh, staff designed this water main, uh, um, upgrade. It was, uh, stamped in internally by, by Steve here and our crew installed it, or the S C R D crew installed it. It was just finished, uh, this last week. And what that does is it replaces an asbestos cement water main, which, um, uh, you know, have, if, if they break, they really break. And, um, it installed a larger pipe as well. It's a twelve inch pipe instead of an eight inch pipe all the way up the hill from Reed up to the reservoir. So, um, and the old pipe, uh, used to go through the bush and everything. It, it's really, um, made our asset much better, much more reliable. And staff have also noticed that it seems like the reservoir drains a little bit slower than in the past. So maybe there is something there that they were able to capture a, um, a, a leaking valve or something like that. Rainwater harvesting always seems popular. Um, we have fifty percent of the funds claimed already. And people are, uh, signing up for their monthly water updates. We're looking at reviewing, um, our bylaws to, uh, incorporate water conservation initiatives, uh, but they're, they're being delayed due to other staffing issues, uh, priorities. Can only work on so many things at once. And we're planning to support Sunshine Coast Tourism and Sunshine Coast Regional Economic Development Organizations with water conservation initiatives. So we're in stage two. I know in the past, uh, past, um, committee asked me, can we just set stage two? Let's just call stage two in June first. And, and going back to those seven bullets I said earlier, there's a lot that goes into calling stage two, three, or four. Stage one, we call in May, but stage two, um, there's been, in the last eight years, I think there's been twice it was called in the beginning of June. The other six were sometime in July, the latest is like the end of July in the last eight years. So there's quite a range and I, I don't suggest setting a date. I think we have a good process of going through these seven bullets and, and making a decision. But I think it's fair to say stage two will be called in June and Ju- June or July. Our first meeting for, um, this drought, um, management took place last week and we meet weekly until we don't need to. So, um, staff are, uh, meeting regularly. Why are there no rebates for small rainwater barrels? I, I think in the past we had something like this all years and years ago. But what we currently do is we support purchasing of forty-five hundred and nine thousand liter, um, totes. And I was looking up last night to try and, how do I explain this? And I found a, a, a report that said something like two hundred and twenty liters is nine minutes with your hose, your garden hose. And that the small totes, the, the little barrels, they're the forty-five gallon drum type barrels, that's nine minutes of watering. So it's only going to do so much. I guess if you have one hanging basket, maybe it'll help you out, but it's not going to help you out for a large garden or, or at least a s- small garden. So if, if, if you have nine minutes of watering once a week, maybe the forty-five hundred, uh, liter barrel will last you twenty day, twenty times. Twenty weeks maybe, if you do that. That's how I was trying to correlate it in my head. So, um, the goal is to promote water efficiency and, and not using water outdoors. And we think the larger barrels do that. There you go. There's the presentation. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but just to remind you that there's two more reports coming up that have a lot of these in them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Waki. Before I go to my directors for questions, uh, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank our staff, uh, for their tireless efforts on the water supply front. To be perfectly honest, they've been through hell and back over the last two years. And I think for anybody to be doing anything other than praising them for those efforts, uh, is reprehensible. In twenty nineteen, the board sat in front of the minister responsible for water at the time. And after explaining our situation with water, we were promised that our license would be given the utmost priority, uh, given the health and safety requirements of ensuring an adequate water supply. Ultimately, uh, as Manager Waki just mentioned, construction's done. Uh, we know that we can use that water, but we are still waiting for a final license to actually use the water. Is anything ever fast enough? No, of course not. Is it enough? No, of course not. We know that. Everybody knows that. Staff are already working on what's next, uh, as is seen throughout the presentation and throughout the agenda package today. The province has announced some early indications of what we should be possibly expecting in terms of mandatory densification in our communities. Uh, they've also indicated a willingness to help with the infrastructure needed to service a growing population. I'm hopeful that this is more than just lip service. Uh, the amount of money received by governments on the coast from the growing community fund really is just a drop in the bucket in terms of what we need to solve our most dire infrastructure shortage. Uh, and whether that's five more wells or a reservoir or going up to Claucham or connecting all our water systems together. Uh, it's going to take a lot of money and it's going to take the province coming to the table to make that happen. So with that, uh, Director McMahon, I see your hand up.
Yes, I just, I had a couple of questions for Manager Waki. Uh, the first one is my understanding is that stage two basically is when the water stops flowing over the dam and we are reliant on the stored supply. So I just wanted to clarify that. And my other question was the five hundred and fifteen top water users. How many of them are seasonal?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, the first question, yes, you're correct. We try and time it so that, uh, we, we're going on to stage two when we stop overtopping Chapman Dam. Prior to that, we can't control the flow over Chapman Dam. We can control it once it's under the dam, under the top of the dam. So you're correct with that. Um, second, I'm not sure, um, hopefully in the next, uh, presentation that your second question can be answered about the five hundred and fifteen users. And while I have the mic, if you don't mind, um, I'm quite excited that our two electric vehicles arrive this week. And they'll be used by field road staff and infrastructure. So the work that the staff are doing, uh, as part of the leaks, they're going out to people's houses, helping them and, and, and driving around looking for things, it'll all be in electric vehicles from now on. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Waki. I've, I've actually got a follow-up question from Director McMahon's, uh, comment or question about the five hundred and fifteen water users. Uh, in the past, we've seen a list of the top twenty, twenty-five water users, uh, and sort of the daily volumes that they're consuming. I know that what the public can see is not, um, has been anonymized, so we can't identify specific businesses or, or places. I'm just wondering if it's possible to, to get sort of the first iteration of that list in the next, uh, water supply update. I know we started looking at the leaks, you know, earlier and earlier every year. And I think it's a good opportunity. Let's start looking at them now. So I'm hope, I'm hoping that can come in the next water supply update. Uh, Director Bax.
Yeah, a question of clarity. So, uh, stage two is triggered by the dam not overflowing itself. Is that correct? And at, at this point, um, I noticed that in the, in the study or in the, the report, you say that Church Road is only going to be, uh, engaged in, at the beginning of stage three. So I wonder why there's that delay. Why, uh, I know there's going to be financial implications of pumping water, using a electricity to pump water and not using gravity. But why don't we engage the Church Road at the beginning of stage two?
Thank you, Chair. If, thank you for picking that up. If it says three, it was intended to say two. That's my goal is to turn Church Road on when we go into stage two. Again, to try and conserve as much water in Chapman Lake as possible. If we could, every day that we're, the lake's not overflowing and we're able to turn Church Road on and save three to four and a half million liters of water in the lake. Uh, or it's not going to be one for one because there's evaporation and whatever, but can, can serve as much as we can in the lake. That's the goal.
Thank you for your answer. That's, uh, that's, that's really good. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I had always understood it to be stage two, so I, wherever you saw it, say stage three. I missed it. So thank you, Director Bax. Uh, Director Stanford?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I would just like some clarification around, uh, when we expect more information regarding Gray Creek. We're on year two of a two-year study. When can we expect to see results?
Can, uh, okay, we'll answer that right now.
Thank you, Chair, for the question. So it's actually a three-year study. So we're actually just in, uh, in the year two of the study. Uh, so after the completion of year two, the consultant will actually provide a draft report of the results compiled. Basically, it, we've been monitoring the creek flow and the data and stuff like that to get an idea of the hydrology of the creek. So after a year or two, to answer your question, would be, a report would be coming before the board.
So the end of this year? Like, I'm not sure, year two?
Cause we're, we just started year two this year. It started last summer on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands up from Director Henderson?
Thank you, Chair. I'm the, uh, invisible person. My, uh, internet wifi, um, seems to be uncooperative this morning. Um, I just want to clarify. So stage two, uh, for Church Creek is great, great news. I assume then all the data in the rest of the report assumes stage two. That we'd be going, using Church Road as soon as stage two happens.
Yes, that's correct. Stage two is when we're going to turn sources on. It's a slight change this year. Like, we're going to turn all our sources on to try and conserve the water at the lake.
And if I may, then, uh, the other thing, we see different numbers. Church Road, at this point, we, how confident are we we'll get three thousand cubic meters or three million liters a day from the, uh, from the current pumps?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, uh, we've had a report from our consultant saying, uh, that number. So I'm quite confident that it's three million to three point two five million liters a day with the current pumps.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Uh, Director Lee?
Uh, just looking for clarification on the, uh, Gray Creek. Um, I saw in the presentation that it suggested we might be able to use it, putting some temporary solution in. And yet I just heard that we need a three-year study before we do anything. So I was wondering if there's, there's probably something in between the two there.
Thank you, Chair. Um, what we're looking at this year is sort of what we were looking at last year about emergency. It's basically a, a truck, a semi truck that with our treatment process you bring in that isn't intended to be permanent. We're just looking at seeing if, how we can mobilize that this fall, get more, um, more information, maybe some more work done as a temporary solution before a, a long-term solution is completed for a, a, a permanent water treatment plant up there.
Go ahead.
I was wondering, um, it was mentioned that, uh, we'd been using Gray Creek for thirty years. Were we drawing wa- more water before the regulations were tightened up or how was that working?
Thank you, Chair. No, I don't think we were. We were, uh, maximizing, it's a seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day license. And I believe we were using all of that at the time, but as the season goes on, uh, in the past, when I was running the system in the past, we could use that water during the summer because it was there. But what's happening now is the creek drops quite a bit because it's such a long drought. We can't maximize the license right now. Um, so that's something else that the, the, um, Steve is working on is, is determining that volume over the last, over the two-year study, three-year study.
So that would provide us with the information to do a proper design if we decided to go forward then?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Director Stanford?
Thank you. Um, during the presentation, staff mentioned that, um, other municipalities and regional districts are coming to the Sunshine Coast asking for our expertise. I'm just wondering, are there other, uh, areas that are responsible for their water that are in a similar situation? Are we working with them as a group?
You're talking provincially or?
Provincially.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We're certainly having conversations with other municipalities, but the, the one person I'm thinking about this, where the siphon wasn't a municipality. It was a, a company that was calling us, asking us how we did it. And, um, again, I think we're getting well-known for using siphons.
Follow up. So are there other regional districts or municipalities that are in a similar situation in terms of, um, water stress and complexity?
I think there's other, uh, areas that are having problems the same as us. They don't use siphons. But, um, you know, there, I think there's, uh, a, a number of municipalities that have identified that their reservoirs haven't recovered and are, are, aren't recovering sort of, you can even look down at the Hoover Dam that they're just at record level lows. I know that's California, but we're starting to see some lack of recovery here.
Thank you. Uh, Director McMahon?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on Director Toth's, uh, comment about the largest water users. So it would not only be interesting to see that information, but a comparison with previous years. Because ideally, some of those highest water users are no longer highest water users. That would, that would be really nice to see. We all know that the hospital is going to be one of them and, and that's not a controllable thing, but yeah. So, so having a little pers- historical perspective would be helpful. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Director Gabius?
Thank you, Chair. Um, during the presentation, uh, Manager Waki talked about the impacts of wells on, uh, neighboring creeks. Wondering if I could get a little bit more information on that and like what impacts have been observed and is there a chance that the impacts are too great? And could, the impacts could impact our capacity to draw water from the wells?
Thank you. Manager Waki?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, you, we have quite a detailed analysis, which is continuing, uh, for that creek specifically. And they actually have it down to the liters per second that we have to contribute back to the creek. So there, in the, in the Church Road, um, station, there's a pipe that actually goes back to the creek. If we're impacting the creek itself. So, um, but when you're, uh, for licensing, that's one thing that they specifically ask for, for a, a study to be done on creeks. So we were, um, we did it, uh, well near Gray Creek as well, and that was going to have to be part of the study. And at that time, you know, it was just going to come out of our Gray Creek license anyways. So that's why we decided to go up with treatment. But, um, every time you're near a creek, uh, we have to do this study. It, sometimes maybe it won't affect the creek, but this time it does.
Thank you. That's a, it's a whole science in and of itself. So thank you for the concise answer. Uh, Director Henderson, welcome back to the virtual meeting.
Yes, thank you. Nice to be here. Um, uh, I guess, uh, the elephant in the room is that we're talking about the granular things of can we find a little bit here? Can we find a little bit there? Is it three thousand cubic meters? Is it four thousand, six hundred? But we're going to run out of water is my great fear. We see a lower snowpack. We see a lower rainfall. And I guess many of what we're talking about here, Langdale, I think I read in our staff report is twenty-five, twenty-six before it comes in. Uh, so, you know, we, I challenge the board, as I have done in the past, what do we do for this summer? What do we do for next summer? And probably what do we have to do for twenty twenty-six? Uh, these are the issues and, and so I'd, I mean, to me, even in our, I believe it's our, one of our policies. We've said stage two is the most that we should accept. That was a policy, I think in twenty eighteen. We're now seems to be accepting that stage three and stage four are acceptable. And, uh, I don't agree. And I guess I'm looking for solutions. E F N is one that I hope that we can figure out. I heard, uh, Manager Waki, uh, talk about the, if we can get some more water, uh, the million cubic meters from the lake would be phenomenal because I think my calculation is right, that that's about forty days of, uh, additional supply. But we got to get answers right now. So I challenge the board, we need to, let's not get into the minutia. Let's figure out what it is that we want to focus on that gets us water now.
Thanks. Thank you. All right. I don't see any other hands up for this part of our agenda package. So with that, no, no last minute. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to Annex A, which is the Chapman Water System Water Supply Scenarios, which I think this, uh, speaks a bit to Director Henderson's comments there. So we'll turn this over to Manager Ed Brook. Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. This report is in response to a request from the board in late February, and staff have taken the opportunity to provide background on water supply forecasting. We want to show that watersheds are dynamic, they're subject to many variables. Talk about hydrologic processes, that includes morning dew, snow melt, watershed loss, and of course impacted by water, meaning water demand and environmental flow needs. Shane talked a little bit about that provincial requirement, and all of that before water is delivered to your tap. I just want to note that this is not a full water demand model, but it did show some of the work that had been done back in 2018 that was much more rigorous and looked out for multiple years, and different scenarios within that as well. And, but I will again note that this analysis is, we are using similar tools that staff use in the summer to support the implementation of the drought response plan and when stages are called. So there are two scenarios, we've overlaid the use of Church Road wellfield, and again, we haven't changed any of the other variables. So this is the exact weather, exact water demand, and the conditions under which stages were called in 21, 2021, 2022. And of course, different decisions could be made depending on all the, the different variables. And again, I'll just go back to the last presentation of the seven items that are talked about, or that are looked at when they're making decisions around the drought response plan and stage calling. I think the main difference that's not captured here, and just to respond to some of the comments earlier, is that this analysis doesn't show, and it's not really discussed in this report, but there is additional storage, right? So when we went to stage four last year, we were only relying on the Chapman watershed and the syphons while they were working. There were a lot of challenges because we got into winter conditions, freezing, we had to stop using the syphons at a certain point. And this means if we do go to stage four, we'll be drawing on two significant sources, and that really does provide more confidence when we're providing water supply through, if we should see the same extended drought conditions in December, into December. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Manager Ed Brook. Director McMahon, is your hand up?
Yes, on page five, the... Sorry, it's, it's, it was a different one. There's a lot of places in these two reports where it says we're waiting on the province. And that's pretty frustrating. So I'm, I'm kind of asking staff, what can we do as a board to expedite some of these provincial processes? Because particularly the Langdale well, two years for a water license. Can we help? Can we, can we do something?
I know that we've got a motion coming from the District of Seashell to AVICC next weekend, asking for the province to step up its resources to the water branch, to specifically to look at permitting approvals, and to also make sure that larger systems are being expedited. I've, I've made reference in the past, you know, I've got a commercial property that supplies 25 people, and they haven't even looked at my application in two years. And that's okay, because I'm a small system, you know. But when we're talking about supplying water to thousands of people, it's got to be top of the pile. So I'll look to staff, perhaps CAO McKinley, if there's any comments on advocacy, or, you know, door banging, or angry letter writing campaigns we should be undertaking at this time.
Yeah, I'm happy to start. I would say that the letter campaigns will be positively worded collaborative offers of helping them help us faster. But yeah, there will be an opportunity for advocacy. And, and if we looked at the example of Langdale, it's not just, it's the province, but it's not one ministry, it's many. And in the case of Langdale, we've got work to do with Modi, we're going to need them on board, and they're going to have a role to play. We've got BC Fairies is involved, so we're going to need to do some work with BC Fairies. And then there's all the various provincial agencies with all the permits and, and requirements in other provincial ministries. I think when, when GM Brown was doing the presentation at the last meeting, I think there was 15 separate permits required for Church Road. And we're going to have to go down a similar path for Langdale. And I would imagine that what we'll be looking to do with the board is as we map out the next steps on Langdale, and some of this will be, I would imagine, will definitely be in scope for some of the Water Summit decisions, especially with the recent information coming out of Skowamish Nation, as to the fact that they're having more interest in some of the, some of their territory located on the Sunshine Coast, is that there would be an opportunity working with, through the Water Summit, with all of the local government leaders, and ideally both Seashell and Skowamish, to help to apply gentle pressure to the province and all the various agencies, including Modi and BC Fairies, that we are working together, they need to work together with us to short-circuit the timelines required, and allow us potentially to start construction earlier than we'd be able to without that advocacy.
Thank you. Director Stamford?
Yes, no, it's slipped away. Never mind.
That's okay, I got another hand. I'll come back to you. Director Henderson?
Thank you Chair. I put my hand up to rescue Director Stamford. I'd like, just on the report through you to staff, I think the numbers were provided on page five about the, if you will, the fewer days in stage four and so on are based on 4,600 cubic meters from Church Road. We've heard earlier that that's optimistic, I would suggest at best. And so I think I'd like to see us modify that. A lot of this is about getting the true and factual message out in the coming weeks to our communities about the situation. It's dire, let's, let's make sure everybody knows that. Let's not talk about the other things that are going to be complex and need advocacy for the long term. But we need people to start conserving now, but certainly the moment the water stops going over the dam.
Thank you. Director Stamford?
Really was a comment regarding how we advocate to the province. I think what we're asking for is some kind of coordinating body that helps communities go through all the different aspects of trying to get approvals. Things are getting more and more complicated by the, the provinces putting these requests on us, but there's no way of being able to have an efficient way of coordinating. And it's not just with getting water licenses, it's all kinds of different authorities that we're having to jump hoops through in order to get what we need to get from the government. So part of the advocacy letter I'd like to see is advocating for a coordinating body to help the communities get through this.
Thank you. Director Gabius? Oh, sorry. GM Brown?
Thank you Chair. Just a comment I'd like to make is, you know, part of the difficulty with the water licensing that the province is going through is they treat each individual license as unique. So they're looking, so they're looking at each, you know, aquifer differently, and the impacts and stuff like that. So each license is created differently, I guess is what I'm saying, and their process of reviewing it is different for each location. So that's part of what's taken a long time for them to review, is for each, they don't have a standardized protocol, as each, each location for the well, as you would, is different. So that also adds to the time.
Thank you. Director Gabius?
Thank you Chair, and thank you to staff for putting this report together. I know there's a lot to do. I found it very useful. I'm wondering, a lot of this information is based on a 2018 water demand analysis, and I'm wondering if, if we would benefit from a, a new one? Is the information that was gathered in 2018 still good enough, or should we be looking at getting another one on the way?
Thank you. And Manager Ed Brook?
Thank you for the question. And through the chair, I believe there's reference in this report to the fact that we do, the staff requested budget to update the 2018 water demand analysis. It's part of, in the umbrella of a larger budget proposal about long-term water sources. So if you go back in the files, you'll see it in the request, it talks about specifically putting some, the overall budget proposal included funds to update the water demand analysis. And I'd have to remember, I think it might even be from last year, from 2022 budget. And I, I think, I'll say, I think it's still, the analysis itself is really helpful, but there's certainly conditions that we've seen in the last two years that were very different from previous years. Certainly haven't seen such dry weather into December, but the water demand analysis is based on 184 days of dry weather. So it's not too far.
Thank you. Director Stamford?
Thank you Chair. I finally remembered my second question. Manager Ed Brook mentioned that there were other storage options available, if I understand correctly, available this year that were challenged last year. As a new board member, I just wonder what those challenged water storage options were.
So what I'm speaking to is during stage four in 2022, we used water conservation regulations. The purpose of water conservation regulations is to ensure that we have enough water for essential purposes, so for drinking, for the hospital, for fire protection, should there not be any rain. Shane mentioned as well, rain-driven system. And we saw that in, in 2022. It was incredible that we did not have any significant rain. There was some short events in November, but certainly not enough to replenish the lakes. And then the lakes were not full until later in December. So what I'm, what I was referring to is the addition of the Church Road wellfield is what is another, like, we can talk about Town of Gibson's, but Town of Gibson's is, is not 3 million liters a day, and, or 4.6 or whatever it may be. And when we look at Great, Great Creek, I believe is a million. But Church Road, the addition of Church Road is a significant water source, that if we are in stage four, we have this extended period, we may not have to go into, and I don't want to predict the future, but we were in a state of local emergency because we were relying on one main significant source, and doing a lot of work to ensure that we had, again, sufficient water for the community. And we can only use the syphons in stage four. So in stage four, to have the syphons and to have Church Road is certainly a lot more water supply, and may not run us into a, a position where we need to be in a state of local emergency. And that's certain, that, I'll just say, that is certainly not where we want to be.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other, oh, Director Henderson?
Thank you Chair. A couple of observations. Conservation that we've talked about tends to be outside conservation. We talk about watering your lawns and your gardens. That's not that significant compared to the inside use. So I'd be encouraging the public to figure out, how do we conserve water in our, inside the house? But the biggest source of water at this point is a reduction in the EFNs. If we could reduce the EFNs by 20 liters per second, I believe that's about 2,000, 2,000, somebody can correct me, maybe it's 1,700 cubic meters a day, 17 million liters a day. We need that, we, if we're talking about advocacy, that is the single thing that is the easiest because it's a stroke of a pen. There's no pumps to be installed, there's no three-phase power, there's no environmental issue, well, there's an obvious environmental issue, which is to be selective in when we use it. But we need that EFN reduced probably to 160 cubic meters on June 1st. And that's where I think you, coming back to your question, or your reference to advocacy, we need to be in Victoria if that's what it takes, and get that signature. And we need, for that, of course, we need the support of our Seashell friends and neighbors.
Thank you. And of course, the EFN does come with the assessments to make sure that we're not going to be harming the fish. And we know from years past that as soon as the fish start looking to return, we have to up the water flow again anyways. So it is definitely a huge help in the start of the season to keep water in the lake for later in the season. So, yeah. Director Bax?
Yeah, just to mention the use of the EFN reduction to, to conserve water, there's a, I guess if it makes sense, if there's a time when there's no danger to the fish, that would be something I, I could get behind. But if it, if it all has an environmental impact on the, on the salmon stocks, it's, it's really dangerous. And is it, is, if it's at a time period that makes sense, and, and we can conserve more water in the lake, then that would, that would work for me. But I just don't know that, what the timing is like.
For sure. And, and it's one of those things that, of course, we need concurrence from the Seashell Nation.
Yeah.
And of course, the province is looking at the fish above all else. They really, they really are. Whether our community agrees with that or not, is besides the point, because they approve it. I'm going to look to staff for a second, because CAO McKinley shared with me some numbers last year about how much water we were releasing for the fish versus consumption for humans. And I'm just wondering if anybody within the staff team knows those numbers offhand. Manager Waki? Because it's quite stark to see, to, to look at those numbers of what we're releasing for the fish versus for use at the plant.
Thank you Chair. If I remember correctly, usually in stage four, our winter demands are around 10 million cubic meter, 10 million cubic meters a day. I believe the fish flow is 17 million cubic meters a day. It's almost double.
Thank you. Director McMahon?
Yes, there's, there's a couple of approvals that we need pretty quick. One is the syphons, and the other is the Church Road water license. So I hope we will, of course, revisit this at the beginning of May. And then if those approvals don't seem imminent, then perhaps we can start panicking and pounding on doors. Would that be appropriate?
CAO McKinley?
Yes, just one second. There we go. So I'll take the first crack at this, and if Shane or Mark want to expand on it, that's fine. With reference to Church Road, we are working with the province right now. I would imagine, things right now look quite optimistic. I would imagine over the next two to three weeks, we'll have better information in terms of the provision of the final authorization to operate the system on June 1st as we're planning. And so I would imagine when we come back to you, probably two to three, two to three weeks' time, if we need an advocacy effort at that point, we will queue you, and we will be prepared to queue you. I don't want to say we'll unleash the Kraken, but we can certainly allow the board to activate, to advocate on our behalf, to ensure that when the water stops flowing over that dam at Chapman, we're able to turn on that system. And in terms of other advocacy, we will be, we, we may engage the services of the board through advocacy to assist with EFN reduction and/or expansion of the ability to use those syphons for the next two years as well. Right now, we're not, we're not quite there yet, but we're monitoring it closely, and we'll be working with you to ensure that your advocacy efforts are timed correctly and directed appropriately.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any other hands up, so I think we will move on from that. So move, thank you, Manager Ed Brook. So moving on to Annex B in our agenda package, is Sunshine Coast Regional District Water Supply. And for this, we'll turn it over to GM Brown?
Thank you Chair. The report that you have before you is basically consolidation of some of the previous presentations, as, as well as the, the communication that went out last Friday to the public in the news release. So I won't go into any great detail, but cover some of the, the highlights and try to respond to the follow-ups on some of the questions that have been posed earlier in the board meeting today. So the Church Road wellfield, definitely the construction of the wells, including the new transmission main, distribution mains, and the new water treatment plant and pump station are complete. So the system is effectively available now to use, subject to, you know, some minor works. However, we are awaiting the license, as we keep talking about. So we are very, very hopeful, we're cautiously- We are very, very hopeful. We're cautiously optimistic. As C A O McKinley said. Staff and the consultants have made good progress with the province. We're quite pleased with the discussions that are taking place. And the provision of information that they require to assess the issuance of licenses is being provided by the consultant. In a, expeditiously, in a prompt manner, so. We're doing what we can to provide the information at our end so they can do the proper assessments to issue the license. Great Creek, I won't go over. That's been covered quite extensively already. Regarding the town of call, Town of Gibson's water supply. We've, C A O McKinley and I met with representatives from the Town of Gibson's and looking at. The water supply agreement that has been used on an emergency basis for the last couple of years. And looking at implementing that sooner in the year rather than later, rather than responding to an emergency. Have some supply that would, again, keep water behind the dam. As well as looking at the whole water supply agreement and how we can best effectively manage our respective aquifers. Including well monitoring, getting together on that as far as working with the same consultant, for example. To share costs as well as information which will bode well for not only maintenance of. And review of what the aquifer is doing, but also provide that information to the province when looking at our wells in general. The EFN reduction has been noted. We did use the reduction during the E O C when I was in the Emergency Operations Center. The province, again, was quite cooperative on the emergency basis, subject to us getting the information, as been noted. The, the fish are, are very important, of course, and Department of Fisheries and Oceans needed some. Biologist reports which we provided, so I would imagine if we were to try to use that. EFN reduction down to one seventy, which is what we got before. Earlier in the year, again, that would be advantageous to keep the water behind the dam. So we're, we're exploring that and as C A O McKinley says, if the progress is stalled, we'll, we'll request some support from the board to help us along there. Same with the siphons at Chapman Lake, it's a. What became in a court of emergency temporary solution is looking like we need it for a long term solution, so we're exploring that. Langdale Well Field Expansion, again, that's been covered extensively in the other reports and. The overall permitting and licensing. I'd like to take the opportunity to note that and appreciate the board authorizing. A, a staff member to be retained to help us along so that our capital project managers can be capital project managers. And retain an individual to help us through the myriad of licenses and permits and procurement of tendering and. And R F Ps, et cetera. Which would help a great deal from the S C R Ds and to obtain the information and. Stick handle the various approvals and licenses that are required to, to bring some of these projects to fruition. So hopefully that will be resourced in the, the next month or two. And would greatly assist us in bringing these projects. And providing the province and the federal government and the various agencies with the information they need to. Proceed with our applications for water licenses, et cetera. The water media installations. We're, we're hopeful that the, the negotiations with the preferred proponent will be completed soon. I receive almost daily updates on that. And we're very hopeful that we can bring that back to the, the board for issuance and, and begin that shortly. In the meantime, there's a lot of work to be done before we can put in meters, including archaeological work. And various other permittings, so we're. Doing that in parallel to reviewing the tender so that when the tender is complete, we'll have a, a lot of that work underway. Has been reported about the potential water reservoir and the site B work next to the she shall airport. That work has been, been started. The water conservation regulations, again, that was outlined quite extensively in the report and. There's a, a very. Comprehensive education program that's looked at. It was a part of the PowerPoint presentation that Shane had, but it's also included as Pen X A to my report here. So that will be, you know, the mail out to all of the users of this, of the system in, in the Sunshine Coast. So the water efficiency is really important, given that our supply is limited. And we haven't got additional supply on board at, as of this time, or hopeful that it will be, but still not enough to. lessen the likelihood that, you know, we're not going to have to conserve. We, we have to conserve. Even if we have plenty of water, we should be conserving, so. The water initiatives, including the meters, the, the education of, of people is, is paramount. And as C A O McKinley noted last summer, the public responded in a tremendous fashion. And we saw a great reduction in summer usage once the stage four restrictions were in place and. The public responded in kind by doing their part. So in summary, it's, it's basically a look at what supply we have available, what supply sources have been authorized by the board to explore. The staff and consultants are actively exploring those supply sources. We've got some good progress with the province on Church Road. We've, as against C A O McKinley noted, we have become. Noted for how to access innovative supply. And we're looking at continuing to operate the system under unprecedented conditions and the staff has been. Very cognizant of the need to tweak the system to make it work most efficiently, given the supply sources that we have. And leak detection is another one that we're working on that we're continuing to explore that. And as the board noted, we'll, we'll continue to look at the high users. So it's just a matter of looking at not only the supply side, but, but demand and conservation, so thank you for the opportunity to report.
Thank you, G M Brown. Just before I go to my speakers list, I've got one quick question here. In round one budget twenty twenty two. The board requested a, a project be brought forward to update the. Desktop, desktop study and sort of look at the next phase of, of wells. You know, it's great that we've got Church Road almost done. Langdale Well is, you know, in process. We're looking at Mary Ann West. Well, what comes after that? And I know that that's a proposal that was approved in round two, twenty twenty two. Now, the notes for it said that, that update would start late twenty twenty two, early twenty twenty three. I didn't see it in here, so I just thought I'd ask staff if that started yet or if not, when we might see that starting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, for the question. So that study has not started yet. It's just the competing priorities. You know, within a staff of three people and basically Church Road being the number one priority. Advocating that project has taken a lot of time, so that's probably anticipated to be started, I would say, in Q three. Of this year where we issue an R F P to obtain a consultant services. To initiate the study and looking for additional water sources, as you mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Director McMahon.
Thank you. I appreciated the copy of the letter that went out to the high water users because I got a call from one of them. Who, who, who was looking at the letter with some perturbation. The example letter that you gave here clearly is somebody who's irrigating. Whatever they're irrigating for, but that kind of begs the question of farm use. So I understand that staff will be coming back to us on the twenty seventh. With some reports or recommendations around farm and agricultural use. Is that the case?
G M Brown.
Yes, probably refer that to Manager. Edbrook, she's got some information on that.
Manager Edbrook.
Thank you for the question and through the chair. Yes, that report is on the April twenty seventh committee of the whole, provides a. Overview of what is a farm, what's the definition of farm, the challenges in our bylaw. There's no definition for farm in our bylaws. We put forth some proposals. We brought them to the board first and then went out to properties with class nine designation. There's certainly a lot more detail in the report and looking forward to presenting it to the board. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the letters. We included them because. We wanted to show you what was going out to the public, especially if you receive any questions. Those letters, they went to properties on the flat residential rate, so doesn't mean that they aren't. There are farms that are on the residential. Or we, we call it flat and metered, right? Very possible that people have home businesses that aren't on the meter grade. They, you asked a question earlier about whether these people are seasonal or not. I mean, we can, we can look at their mailing address, but it doesn't mean that there isn't somebody living there. Full time. It's really hard for us to make that assumption, but the, we're, there, and there are certainly a, a number of people that we've spoken to that. Sure, they come on the weekends or come in the summer, but there's plenty of properties where they're year round. People living at those properties of the five, over five hundred and. Some of them receive the monthly water use update, but most of them do not. And you mentioned the Seashell Hospital, that commercial volumetrically built properties are not included in the five hundred and fifty because they receive. A bill every quarter that tells them how much they're using them. They pay the additional cost on, on top of the meter grade for. Whatever the bylaw says, they get a certain amount of eighty four cubic meters per quarter and then they pay on top of that. And I'll just add one more thing. This, the letter was really about bringing awareness, right? So sure, they might be irrigating. They, they might have other uses on their property. I think we did scan through the users. If they're using a high amount all year round. We didn't send it to them because we thought maybe that wasn't necessarily seasonal use or related to the, to water conservation regulations. And there was a mention earlier about outdoor use. That's certainly across the board. I would say even when I look at my own water use, I live. On a property that is metered, I can see that we have higher use in the summer and that's attributed to your baseline winter use. What you're using indoors. It's very easy to tell what you're using indoors when you look in December, January. How would you use with your appliances? And then in the summer, you're watering your garden, you're doing outdoor maintenance.
Thank you. Director Bax.
Yeah, before I, before we move on from this, I just wanted to. Put my words behind a sentiment that you raised earlier that I do. This board now is, we're four days away from six months in. And I think the, the work that I've seen while I was here by the staff is just exemplary. I think it's just. They've had a difficult situation and they've really stepped up. The tenacity of the service that they've given to this community is above and beyond what was asked of them when they took these jobs on. And I'd just like to commend them for their work.
Thank you, Director Bax. Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair, and through you. A question about water meters and volumetric billing. I think it's been. Well demonstrated that volumetric billing can do wonder for conservation. And we're quite, we're ways away from having everybody on the Chapman system hooked up with a meter. So I'm wondering if there's any possibility that we could roll out the volumetric billing program. Kind of in stages or like start with the rural areas who already have their meters. Any, I'm sure this has been explored. I'd like to know what staff thinks.
Thank you for that. Who would like to? G M Brown?
Through the chair, thank you, thank you for the question. It, it is definitely something staff is looking at providing a report back to the board on. We're looking at it comprehensively throughout. The region based on, as you say, that the meters ultimately being stalled throughout the region is to how is it implemented? Is it phased in? Is it looking at areas that already have meters and begin, begin billing volumetrically? Looking at the rates. Looking at the Gibson's experience whereby, you know, it was a forty percent reduction in consumption. It's significant, so. What will that do to rates? What will that do to the need to. Maintain the system once meters are installed, so what, what the rates will be based on that cost, so. Yeah, the whole gamut of the impact of meters throughout the region is being looked at and it's. I can't say when the report's going to be delivered, but it will look at phasing in meters and, and give that more of the option.
I know the conversation still needs to happen to a, a great extent with the community on what volumetric building is even going to look like, so. Yeah, directors, any other questions? Director Gabius, I see your hand again.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is more of a comment. There. And staff is commu- has a lot of ways to communicate to residents. So through the media, through the Let's Talk page, through these reports and. I feel it would be useful to have, because I think Let's Talk, the Let's Talk page is a good start, like it's got a nice, like it's where all the information is stored. But it's, I feel like it's perhaps lacking an at a glance. View of like what, what's our supply, what's our demand, like something a little. Like a quick snapshot of where we're at without having to go through reports and finding, finding graphs and I'm, you know, just putting it out there. I think that would be quite helpful.
Great. Thank you for the comment. I see that our manager of communications and engagement is on the meeting with us, so hopefully he heard that. One, just before I go to, just before I go to your manager Buckley, I did have one question which. Somebody can answer, I suppose. I forgot to ask it during the presentation. I assume the presentation slides are going to be uploaded to the website somewhere, hopefully soon, where they're easily accessible. I'm seeing some head nods. So thank you. Manager Buckley, did you want to say anything to us?
Thank you, Chair Totten. Thank you for the, for the comment, Director Gabius. And yeah, you're bang on. And it's a challenge that we've, we've, we've put ourselves this year is to explain quite complex information. In a manner that's very easy for people to understand and, you know, looking at, you know, how we explain capacity versus demand. And understanding that it may not be accurate to the milliliter, that it might just be a broad overview of where we're at. But that snapshot in time is hugely important. So yeah, your, 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 your comments bang on and it is something that we're absolutely. And looking at and Chair Totten, the, the presentation will be available on the website as soon as this meeting concludes. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you very much. Director Henderson.
Thank you, Chair. My hand went up automatically, but. Two things, I guess. First, we, we're talking about water meters. You mentioned in the report that we're waiting on different parts and so on and a completion of a contract. But is staff in a position to advise us when meters will be fully installed?
Good question. G M Brown.
Unfortunately, I, I can't give you that answer now. I have to talk to our, our capital manager. It's been, been speaking with the preferred proponent, proponent, sorry, on that, so. I can't give you the definitive data on that.
Oh, yeah, but hopefully at the next meeting.
How about a guess?
I don't want staff to speculate on other, other people's.
It's going to be, it's going to be a long time. Okay. The other one is on the water reservoir in Site B. I encourage staff to look at how we increase the size of that. Because it isn't going to be big enough as contemplated when it was originally designed a few years ago. So that would be long term and that I recognize is. I'm talking so much about short term stuff, but in terms of the well, of the reservoir, that's certainly a five or more year project, but let's get it right. Let's not build it too small and wish we hadn't had thought of that, so. Build it bigger and thank Gibson's for their water in the meantime.
Good comments. Thank you. Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair, and through you. And like, now that we have Manager Buckley online, I'm wondering how we're going to communicate the water restrictions to visitors this summer. Things are gonna, people are gonna start coming to see us.
Possibly as soon as this weekend. Thank you. Manager Buckley.
Thank you for the, for the question. And yeah, so we, we work quite close to it Sunshine Coast Tourism in getting messaging out to visitors as they come on over to the coast. And that, in addition to, as we hit stage three, stage four. And we look to B C ferries as well to carry announcements for us, for everybody who's coming on to the ferries. And that, in addition to, you know, to everything from flyers to signage on the road. And we're hopeful that that should help spread the message to, to tourists and visitors. And there's a couple of other publications that are focusing on visitors that we tend to place ads in seasonally and will look to do that too. And, but again. And but again, any, any suggestions to be brought forward, we're always, always happy to hear them and always happy to implement through the summer to ensure that the, the message has as far a reach as possible.
Thank you. Uh, and I guess I have one last request in that if we've got messaging to go out, you know, the, the letters or, or what have you, uh, I'd encourage copies to get sent to the board. We know a lot of people. We've got a lot of people in our networks. Um, we can help amplify the, that messaging outside of the usual channels. So um, yeah, thank you, Manager Buckley, and thank you to the rest of staff. I don't see any other hands up. So uh, it's ten fifty-five. Do we want to just take a ten minute break? Thank you very much. So we're going to take a ten minute break. We'll see you back at eleven oh five. Good morning and welcome back to the Committee of the Whole for April sixth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we're moving on in our agenda. I noticed that the majority of our gallery has left, so they clearly don't care about the solid waste management plan update, uh, which is Annex C. So I will turn this over to Manager Ed Brook or Manager Soul. I'm not, Manager Soul, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. Um, as many of you are aware, a solid waste management plan is a provincial requirement that regional districts need to do, and these plans guide solid waste management for the region for the next ten years or so. And so what we've got in this report here is a request to kick off our engagement and plan update process to uh, get us a plan that will guide us through, through some challenging times in the years ahead here.
All right. Um, thank you for the brief introduction. Director McMahon.
Yes, in the public engagement portion of this process, I didn't see anything about businesses and particularly contractors since construction waste is such a large portion. Every time I see that, what is it, four hundred kilograms a year, I think, that's not me. That's somebody else. What are we doing? Thanks.
Yeah, through the chair and thank you for the question. So uh, this, this initial round of engagement is um, as per the provincial guideline that we have to follow, focused on guiding principles and big picture objectives. So uh, when we drill down in our second and third engagement period, looking at future waste disposal and also actual initiatives in the plan, then we'll be getting into things tackling specific areas like construction demolition waste. And uh, in that, in those areas, we might be a little bit more comprehensive in who we're targeting and how we're targeting them. And right now, we're just trying to get word out to the wider populace to come and tell us what they, uh, what they think we should focus on and what our overall big picture objectives should, uh, should be.
Okay, thank you. And I notice on the middle of page nineteen, the landfill or the waste disposal options analysis is going to be coming back in Q three, twenty twenty-three. So uh, still a ways out, but you know, vitally important as well. So I just wanted to flag that. Director Backs?
Yeah, I just wanted to uh, touch on that, on the, the sources of the waste as well. So uh, there are some jurisdictions now that have implemented rules about demolition waste and they're trying to recoup building materials and such. Uh, that's, that could be one thing I think that may be coming in the future, I would imagine. Uh, but another thing is, is there, uh, I know it's really beyond our control, but lobbying um, things like the, the packaging industry, uh, which creates uh, over packaging. Seems to be a really big problem. Uh, there's too much plastic, there's too much cardboard, there's too much packaging in everything that we have, and uh, that's what's filling up our, our trash. So anyway, um, that, uh, if you have any ideas on how we can deal with that and try to advocate up the chain, I guess it would be a federal jurisdiction thing to go after the packaging industry. Uh, I'd be more than welcome to listen to the, anything you have on that.
Thank you, Director Backs. It's a, I guess that, that, at the root of the question is what role is there for the board in advocacy on changes through this process? And uh, I don't know if staff would be prepared to speak to that right now. Manager Soul?
Yeah, through the chair and thank you for the question. Um, so my understanding is, uh, at U B C M, there have been many resolutions over the years focused on exactly those types of issues and, and problems. And so there's definitely room for advocacy at the, the board level when it, uh, when it comes to things that are out of our control like how much packaging is in a product that somebody buys, uh, that we are then stuck dealing with on the backend there. So there's definitely room and I think through this plan, when we start getting into the initiatives and projects that we might be wanting to tackle, we can have that eye to look for opportunities for advocacy at the board level.
Thank you. But still very, very early days to find out what our community sees as the priorities in the update.
And construction waste? Or recouping construction materials?
Targeting, this is outside the scope of the initial phase of the plan.
Copy that.
Thank you. Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair, and through you. Uh, wondering when, when are we going to set targets? Is that, does that happen before uh, public engagement or after?
Good question. Manager Soul?
Through the chair and thank you for the question. So uh, those, those targets will kind of come after this initial round of public engagement. Right now, we're focusing on the Right now, we're focusing on the big picture guiding principles that we want to hear from the public, and then we're going to have our consultant draft some initiatives with the help of staff, and also come out with some targets that we'll then take back to the, the public for another round of consultation. The province has also set targets for waste disposal per capita, and so our plan is going to have to have those in mind when we set those. Otherwise, we can always aim higher if we so choose.
Thank you. And I don't see any other hands up. So on page 18, we have some recommendations, if directors are so inclined.
Wow, that was quick, even before my hand went up. I would like to move the recommendations on page 18.
Thank you. And I've got a second before that. This is voting all, of course. Any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Excellent, that's carried. Thank you. So moving on to, and thank you, Manager Sol, moving on in our agenda to Annex D, the Code of Conduct Policy, and we'll turn this over to CAO McKinley.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, the Code of Conduct Policy, so this is a requirement that this be brought forward for board consideration within the first six months of your term. So we had four additional days left to get this before you. This is, there have been two previous drafts of board code of conducts presented for board consideration, one in 2013 and one in 2019. Those were not adopted. This version is based on the Province of B.C., LGMa, UBCM, guide called Forging the Path to Responsible Government. And I'd like to recognize all the work that Christine Armadage did on putting this together for your consideration. Just for a bit of further context, staff have also adopted a code of conduct in June of '22. Prior to that, we adopted a respectful workplace policy in June of 20, or in January of 2020, which replaced our previous bullying and harassment policy that was developed in November of 2013. So as you look at this for consideration, you are not obligated to, you're not obligated to, to incorporate it, but if you choose not to, you do have to declare publicly why.
I, yeah, I, I just have a question about this policy. So on page 26, section 4.1, point 2, it talks about the foundational principles of conduct. Now that's from the, is that from the, is it the Local Government Act? The foundational principles of conduct are pretty much mirror this document, and I was wondering if that's not all we need to adopt.
Just through the chair for clarification, is, is, is that an observation or is it a question, wondering if the entire code of conduct you're being asked to pass could be reduced to just that section?
I think that is the general gist of the question.
Yes, yes.
Is if it could just be, you know, members will ensure that their actions are consistent with the foundational principles of conduct. And just to tag on to that question, I will ask, the core of this policy was not drafted entirely by staff. This is a template policy, I believe, that came from elsewhere.
Yeah.
And are those foundational principles of conduct in the Local Government Act as Director Bax references, or are they referenced somewhere?
I don't believe that they would be enshrined in any way in the Local Government Act, but they would be, they would be taken from the guide that was produced by the Province, UBCM and LGMa.
Okay. Thank you. Director McMahon?
Yeah, I would like that clarified in the document is where, where you can find the foundational principles, because if we're going to reference them, we need to be able to find them. I, this seems to be a very aspirational document. I don't know how we can control how members direct their minds, or even see how directors are directing their minds. So I'm having some difficulty determining what we would do if Director Stamford was not directing her mind to the decision, merits of the decision before her, then what would we do?
What I can say is this, this, think of this as very similar to your oath of office. This is a self-policing code of conduct. The idea being that it's not one person's role, it's not up to the chair to do this and do the policing. There's no code of conduct police that's going to show up with a uniform at the back of the room. But all of you, just like your oath of office, have an obligation, if you choose to adopt this, to conduct yourselves in accordance with what you've committed to. Just like as staff, we have a code of conduct and a respectful workplace policy, and it's up to all of us, not just any one individual, to, to ensure that we are living the policy we aspire to.
Thank you. Just before I go on to the next person, in, in reading through this again with a mind looking for this foundational principles of conduct, I think this is one of those cases where the definition has been used within the definition, or the word has been used within the definition, because the heading at the top says foundational principles of conduct. And next to 4.1, it says integrity. Next to 4.2, it says accountability. Next to 4.3, it says respect. Next to 4.4, it says collaboration. So based on the heading that's here, I, I believe that that is the intention of putting the word being defined within the definition. So Director Gabius?
Thank you, Chair, and through you. Seeing on page 27, point 4, point 5, point 2, education about the code of conduct will be provided to board members every four-year term. I'm wondering if we have a plan for this, if, and/or when will we get some education?
I think we'd have to adopt one first, but I'll look to, to CAO McKinley.
So it would be, moving forward, it would become a standard part of orientation. Part of our orientation this time was around respectful workplace, but at the time, it was modeled on the respectful workplace policy that staff has, because the board hadn't developed or approved the code of conduct. What is available, though, through UBCM, LGMa, are a number of resources, and what we can do is instead of just noting for you that these resources are available in terms of training, we'll provide you with the links to them.
Thank you.
And, and if requested, we could provide a lunch and learn, we could, there's, there's a number of things we could do, but we can start by sending you to the links that were developed in support of the guide that we used to build the code of conduct in the first place.
Thank you. Director McMahon, I see your hand up.
Okay, I'm going to nitpick item 4.2.2. Members will consider the needs of the region in all decisions. I'm just going to point out that we are not directed, elected at large. We are elected for our constituencies, and personally, I would rather see that, that it said something like both the needs of our constituency and the overall needs of the region, because we have to consider both when, when we're sitting here at the table. I'm representing Area E, and while I do, it's very important to represent the whole region as well. Those are, those are two, two different things.
That's an interesting point. It actually replicates language that's in the oath of office itself, because the oath of office specifically says, you know, not only the area you represent, but the region as a whole. So...
If, if desired, what we could do is take the wording from the oath of office that mentions both and incorporate it into that section, into that clause, so the two mirror one another.
Okay, thank you. I think synchronizing them is important, because this was probably developed originally as a guideline mostly for municipalities, I bet, given that it was provided by UBCM. Director Stamford?
Do we need a motion to make those kind of changes on this document?
Yeah, motion. We, we will.
Okay, so just keeping that in mind.
Yep, we will. But I will have the discussion first, and then we'll wrap it all in one motion.
Right. So it's just more of a comment, as usual. I, I totally understand the, the need for this kind of thing. If we've listened to the news at all, there's some really scary things going on in especially smaller communities around British Columbia. I don't think it's just specific to public governance. It seems to be everywhere we look, there's sort of a, a lack of decorum in our, our public engagements. I still don't see anywhere where it provides consequences. Like, what are we going to do if people are not going to play by the rules? It, it's a difficult question, but somewhere along the line, there's got to be consequences for bad, rude, horrible behavior in the, the public realm, especially at local government. So I'm looking forward to seeing some motions to tighten this document up. I'm not good at them.
I, I know we had a little bit of this conversation at Agenda Review regarding consequences for your actions, and I just want, would invite the CAO to speak to that, because it, being a policy, it has different levers available to it than if it were a bylaw. And some places have done bylaws versus policies to give it more teeth. So between the CAO and the CEO, I'm hoping we can get a...
I, I can make a couple of comments. This is not the stick. The stick is actually the Local Government Act, and, and the Local Government Act does spell out times and circumstances where board members can be censured for certain things. What this is, however, is a guide. And the, and this guide, this conduct guide, I mean, what are the consequences if someone breaks the code of conduct? I, I think that the biggest consequence is an erosion in the faith of the public, that we have their best interests at heart and that we're working towards them. It's an erosion of trust. It's a depiction of bad governance that makes people lose faith in their, in the, in the staff and the elected officials that represent them. And we don't have to look too far afield to see what that looks like. I, I, I mean, I've, this is year four I've been here. I have yet to be in a meeting that I feel someone needed to really pull out the old code of conduct and start waving it around and saying, what on earth are we doing here? But I've sure heard of places, other places, where that would have happened. I think it's, it's, I mean, I'm glad we have one as staff. I think it's good that we have something that reminds us of the importance of how we work together and in the importance of how we demonstrate the work we do together to the people we serve.
Thank you. Director, or did the corporate officer want to speak to the, okay. Director Bax?
Yeah, just, I think that what the CAO has said was, makes a lot of sense. Nitpicking again, section 4.2.4. I just don't want to be censured for asking the CEO what type of telescope she's going to use next week, or something like that. So I imagine there's a lot of leeway in these, in these guidelines, so that we can be civil and it doesn't have to be all business talk. You see what I mean?
I think that would be a fair, I think that would be a fair...
But outside of that, I, oh, there's another...
I don't know that you also, I, I don't know that you want to get overly prescriptive either, because you may leave the floodgates wide open. I mean, if you were, if a member is, a member is found to be in breach of the code of conduct, it is not any one person's job to decide that. As the CAO mentioned, there's not going to be any code of conduct police officer standing at the back of the room. It's not even going to be up to the board chair.
Right.
It is the board as a whole. So if you're asking the corporate officer about her stargazing activities, I think we'll all be interested in that conversation, to be perfectly honest. But, so I'll leave it there. Any other questions or comments or tweaks or adjustments that directors want to see? Director White? You look like you want to speak.
Why did?
Not anymore? Okay. So at this point, we've only got the one amendment to make to it, to synchronize the language in 4.2.2 with our code of, oath of office.
Yes.
So looking over to staff, do you want this referred back to make that change and then come forward, or could, because it's only one change, could we do it on the fly?
Thank you for the question. Yes, I think we can actually adopt the policy as amended, and we would include the wording for the amendment in the resolution.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to that?
I think you can make a motion to that effect. Do we have that wording at hand, so we know exactly what it's going to say? Lori?
Sorry. And that the code of conduct policy be amended as, be amended to incorporate wording in 4.2.2 to integrate language with the, from the oath of office.
So that it be adopted as amended to include wording from the director's oath of office to include the needs of the electoral area and the region as a whole.
Okay. I think that's sufficient. Director Bax, are you making that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we accept the recommendation...
As just read.
Yeah, as read, as, as amended.
CAO?
We had only looked at the electoral area oath of office, so it would be the needs of the electoral area or municipality and the region as a whole.
Very good. I believe that's what you said, Director Bax.
Yes, that's what I said.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'd like to move that we, that's the recommendation two on page 23.
Okay, thank you. And I've got a second before that, and Director Lee, thank you. I don't see any other hands up debating the motion, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Okay. So moving on in our agenda to Annexes E and F, these are minutes from a couple of our advisory committees. Is there anything that directors or staff wanted to flag? I had one comment, or question in the WASAC minutes on page 31. The last bullet point of discussion mentions that staff will integrate feed, integrate feedback received from WASAC into the draft water strategy and request feedback be received by March 31st. So I guess my question as a director is, are we going to see any of that feedback? Did we receive any feedback? And I think I'll just leave it there for the moment. I'm not sure, CAO, I see your mic on, but I also see Manager Ed, Ed Brook unmuted. So Manager Ed Brook?
Thank you for the question. Staff brought the first draft of the water strategy that we've been working on last year. We went out to public engagement in May, June of 2022, and asked the public, what should we include in this strategy? We brought forward a framework, and then we came back with a number of actions that we should do under, we call it four focus areas. And we asked WASAC for some feedback. They, they provided some verbally during the meeting, and some members of the committee also provided feedback in writing. Our plan is to incorporate the feedback. We weren't planning to bring the feedback to the board, but if that's something that you wish to see, happy to. At this point, our intention was to incorporate it and then to listen to what we hear in, through the Water Summit series as well, as I think there will be some, potentially some changes that we want to make that come out of those meetings, to think about this. The, the intention of the water strategy was really around the S C R D water systems, but it's possible that it should be broader.
Thank you. I don't particularly need to see the feedback, I just wanted to make sure that we had received useful feedback from WASAC, so. Director Bax?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight my community once more in this, in this report that we've, the, the minutes from the WASAC meeting. Second last bullet, bullet point on page 31 suggests involving community groups and attending community group events. I just wanted to let staff know that... I just wanted to let uh staff know that there are a goo- a good number of uh community events in Roberts Creek. Uh, the next one is the on the twenty-second of April, there's a Earth Day celebrations, which is one of our big springtime ones. Uh, I know it's probably last minute for the staff to get involved in that community event, but there is also uh Creek Days in August and some other events.
I think staff are well aware well aware of the events that they need to be at.
Good thing.
Thank you. And it's not particularly germane to either set of minutes, but uh thank you for those comments. Um, I don't see any other hands up, so I think we will move on from that. We have no communications, we have no new business, we have no in-camera session, so I look for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved, seconded, all those in favor? Carried. Are there any questions from our gallery? Come on up to the microphone so the folks online can hear you. And those of you who are online, if you wish to ask a question, you can raise your virtual hand and you'll be given permission to speak.
Hi, I'm Bob Mitchur. I've been on the coast for forty years. Um, just to give you a little background, I was a forestry or Forest Service person up in northern British Columbia for years. Uh, ended up on the Queen Charlotte when they are arresting the loggers in the day because of the slides going down to the creek. I got sent in there to help that thing. So I worked for years in the Queen Charlotte on the South Moresby, down on the South Moresby with Frank Bevan and and Western Forest Products. So um I moved here because my wife was ill of cancer, and I picked the Sunshine Coast off the map because they wouldn't give me anything else. And I anyways, I have quite a bit of forestry background and some government background. Um, this um I was here working for the Forest Service when the park was made, and in the day, it was um very clear for provincial government that they would give us access to the water. That was part of the deal. It got made into a Class A park, and now over the years, that Class A park, the definition of the Class A park doesn't let our freedom into our water, which we were promised at the time. And um I was probably on the last fire up in Gray Creek, the fire boss on the last fire up in Gray Creek in the day. Um, but I my me, my friends just can't believe that you didn't, you just rolled over when George Hayman said, no, we're not going to let you work on the dam. Um, that's one of the big ones because it it was all in writing. There was lots of lots of stuff there. George Hayman, just to let you know, he got a scaling license with me and the Queen Charlotte in the day. That's when he became the B C G U rep, and that's when he moved on up to the ladder into B C G U. I took over his job as the area rep, and that's how George got into his environmental thing. That's the history there. Now, the E F N, from what I remember, and I think you should probably look at this, the E F N, when it was done, it was a volunteer volume at the time. There was concerns, there wasn't really too much concern about water and drought in the days, right? And the regional district went into it saying, okay, we'll go two hundred. And I can't remember whether it was one twenty, one sixty, and upped it to do the fish for the fish needed. But there was no stipulation about at the time about when there was no fish in the creek. And by the way, uh, a bio- a biologist fishery buddy of mine yesterday pulled me over and said, did you know, and I don't know this, but Chapman Creek, the fish in Chapman, salmon in Ca- Chapman Creek are hatchery fish. There is no natural fish or native run in Chapman Creek. He said, if I if there was a native natural run in Chapman Creek, he said he would be all over keeping the E F N where it is. He said, but those the fish in Chapman Creek are hatchery. I have no idea, you guys will have to do that one, but that's a good selling point to um the provincial government on reduction of the E F N. Um, I think um yeah, that's that was an important point, but the E F N was put there, and in my day, in my forestry days, we could run a a skitter up the middle of the creek when the fish weren't there, right? In June, July, August. And here we are throwing a whole bunch of water over the dam, which we could use now. Um, I think that you guys should really look at this E F N and take a delegation over to Victoria and say, we need this because look at March right now, right? Dry as March in forever. Are we going to get rain this summer? Are we going to run into the same problem? For the provincial government to, at stage four, agree to reduce the E F N at the driest part of the year, blows my mind. Why would they? It's just a question.
So the little bit of context on the E F N, it was one sixty.
Yeah.
It was mandated to two hundred. It wasn't uh everything that we've were reported out in the last term, it was mandated to two hundred, partly because there was no ability to control the flow at the dam.
That's right, at the time.
So in the within the last four, five years, uh controls and automation has been installed up at the dam.
Yeah.
That allows staff, you know, from their cellphone to adjust the 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 flow out the dam.
That's right.
And so I think that was a large part of our push to reduce that E F N again in that, you know, if we see fish at the mouth of the creek, somebody can go on their phone and and turn up the taps at the lake.
Yeah.
So that it is definitely a a broad conversation. Um. Director Backs?
No, nothing.
Okay.
And those are my kind of my points for you on it.
Yeah.
And okay, so and the other one is is that Hillside, guys, look at Hillside. There's an economic development thing there, sitting waiting, been nothing done with it for years. Now, if you go down there and I have people who will take you for a tour down there, the business that's down there for the Sunshine Coast is huge. Um, just by the way, there's lots of opportunity. We have a bunch of industrial land down there that's just sitting there and doing nothing. And it's the price of the stuff's going up sky high everywhere, and we have nothing down there. But there's no, Hillside should be looked at too, just by the way.
This year's budget has um an approved proposal for us to partner with Scrito, I believe, to do hillside development work, so.
Okay.
It is it is coming for sure.
Yeah.
We do recognize that we need to use our industrial lands.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And I've got one other attendee online. I'm going to give them permission to speak. Uh, you should be able to speak.
Hi, am I being heard?
Yep, we can hear you just fine.
Awesome. Um, Lisa Gerodi here. I'm a Roberts Creek resident, um landscape designer, um large-scale food producer, uh my residence here. Um, I have lots of questions as somewhat of a new um member to the Sunshine Coast, and I'll apologize if I I did miss the beginning part of the meeting. So if anything that I ask was discussed, I apologize in advance. Um, I've got three questions and two thoughts. My first question is probably quickly answered, and that is, what are the current water levels at Chapman? I was sent um a link to a graph, which as a layperson, I had a really hard time understanding regarding the snowpack and all of that. So I'd love to know right now what the levels are and how they relate to twenty twenty-two or previous years.
Okay, that was part of the presentation at the beginning that you would have missed.
Apologies.
But it's at this time, it's full. Um, the snowpack and the snowwater equivalent are roughly comparable to last year. Um, the snowpack is a little bit higher in Edwards, um but similar in Chapman. Yeah, uh, it was at the beginning. Um, you'll be able to review it back on YouTube.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, my second uh question is, um, what are the educational plans, uh public awareness plans related to stages two and three? I ask because we talk about how um impactful the education plans were for stage four and how well the public responded, but my perception is that a lot of people didn't know what to do for stages two and three. And while there may have been a lot of or some information online, I feel like I certainly didn't see a lot of information in the public um in the public sphere, uh you know, and I and I'm really curious about how proactive we're being at those early stages around public awareness and education so that we can get some really early-stage conservation happening from the residents of the S C R D.
Okay. Uh, I will take a stab at it. I don't think our manager of communications is on here anymore, but I welcome other comments from directors. Uh, I know that staff do send out a mailout of the various stages. We do have highway signs that sort of indicate what stage level we're at. So if you're traveling sort of anywhere on the coast, you're going to pass one of those signs usually.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we do post on social media, and I think the S C R D, well, yeah, the S C R D also includes newspaper advertising because there's a standing full page or two-page spread in the newspaper every week, so it's included in the newspaper as well.
Perfect, okay.
If there's if there's things that you think would be useful that maybe is not being touched on, uh, we would absolutely welcome those suggestions. Um, I think as things get a little more severe, they even step up radio advertising.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, yeah, that's great. I mean, um, I I think all of that is awa- awesome, and I think, um, I mean, one immediate thought is I, you know, infographics are so helpful, and I know in terms of fire hazard um levels, that we have that really helpful infographic that shows where we are in terms of stages of dryness. And I think some version of that showing, you know, some graphic of a reservoir that had a a water level, and as the reservoir depleted, that that could be shown as a way to truly understand where we are. That's that's a very, you know, basic example, but that was one idea that I'd had. Um, and like large poster campaigns everywhere. Um, I mean, as somebody who picks up the the Coast Reporter, um, I'm not on, I'm not engaged in social media activity very often, but um, you know, I I I still don't feel like, was it on the front page of every Coast Reporter you're seeing biweekly, but in the top right-hand quarter of uh corner of every Coast Reporter showing us what stage and what that means, you know, in in the form of an infographic, I think would be incredibly useful. Um, uh, and then I guess I guess in relationship to that, like, is the S C R D prepared to implement earlier stage two or stage three? I mean, we, I I don't know how far we're able to look ahead in terms of understanding what is going to happen this year in terms of the weather forecast, but how are we prepared to implement stage two at this stage?
So it was mentioned in the meeting, stage two is called as soon as water stops flowing over the dam. Uh, as soon as stage two is declared, it's because we're relying on storage within the lake.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so up until that point, there's no point in saving it because we've got nowhere to save it.
No doubt.
Um, stage stage three is weather forecasting dependent and usage dependent, and it's a it's a variety of factors for sure. Uh, as we bring Church Road, Town of Gibson's, you know, other other sources online earlier, hopefully that will push stage three further back into the year, but uh staff highlighted sort of seven touchpoints that that helped them make that decision on when to call the stages. Uh, Director Stanford, I saw you raise your hand.
Yes, in reference to the graphic communications during the break at the just now, we were in discussions with staff as to exactly that would be a picture of a lake and where we're at at each at stage, and it'd be available to be updated very easily. So staff are working on that.
Thank you. Um, and I'd also like to acknowledge that, you know, maybe we take we take some notes from the She-Shal Nation in terms of their infographics and posters. I think they did a very effective job at communicating water levels, and and maybe there's something something to learn there from from how they implemented um poster campaigns could be very useful.
Thank you. Uh, C A O, did you have something to add?
Yeah, just very quickly. First, Lisa, thank you for all the constructive feedback and welcome to the Sunshine Coast. We are working on new infographics uh uh as we speak, and we're excited to get those out into the public, but please feel free to submit any thoughts or ideas you have to info@scrd.ca. And again, Lisa, thanks so much for your comments.
Will do.
All right, thank you. And another question from here in the room, come on up to the microphone so the folks online can hear you. All the way in Egmont, right? Yeah.
Yeah, my name, my name is Tom Beck. Um, I'm not going to tell you my life history like my friend Bob did, but but few things. I've I've been in the in the Sunshine Coast for a while, and uh I was a member of the previous Sunshine Coast Water Advisory Supply Committee, and I'm I've been beating the drum on this E F N since March of two thousand and nineteen. And so I I, for those of you that know me, I'm like a broken record on it, and and there's a lot of aspects to it. Um, I just want to, for the for the new directors, I guess I want to encourage you to dig into this and understand the simplicity and the potential amount of water available to us. And uh and it seems to me that every time I get into a discussion with somebody about this E F N, it's news to them, or there's some aspect to it they haven't thought about yet. And and everybody that seems to have wrapped their mind around it completely, all of a sudden gets on board with it. Like, you know what I'm saying? And so I think you're new, and you're possibly new, um, Stanford and and Kelly Black, um, dig into it, and and by understanding it, you'll become more supportive of it. That's my one comment. Now, the S C R D, I first brought this up after studying that two thousand and eighteen report in detail, and I did a bunch of spreadsheets, and I determined that at that point in time, depending on how far you reduced it, we either would not have had stage four at all or only about two weeks of stage three. So depending on how much you can reduce the E F N, it has it has a potential of a huge impact. What what captured my imagination about it was that it is essentially free water, like the the cost of implementing an E F N reduction is essentially free. So 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 that's big. When you start talking about reducing the E F N, everybody's mind that I talked to goes to, oh, it's there for the fish, you can't do anything with it. Believe me, I don't want to harm any fish, but I but I but having talked to some biologists and this and that, I'm of the opinion that what's strongly worth looking at is, instead of turning the E F N on twenty-four-seven all year, isolate it to this is when we have to have what we have because we have fish. And then as has come up, I think there's a potential for two and a half months of cranking it back even just to the one sixty that they allowed during the emergency. So when I saw the one sixty, I said to myself, well, if somebody's approved one sixty, reasonable to assume that there is not irreparable damage to the aquatic life in the creek at one sixty, otherwise it wouldn't have approved one sixty. So I cranked some numbers on one sixty, and just to put it into context, if we could reduce that E F N to one sixty for June, July, and half of August, because my understanding is that the salmon comes sporadically, couple of weeks at a time in August and September. So if you just reduce the F N June, July, and half of August to one sixty, for every three days that you reduce it to one sixty, that's the equivalent of impounding one more day of water in Chapman Creek. And so if you could reduce it to that, we would have another twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven days, call it a month, of water in Chapman Lake. And if and and when Church Road well comes on, and if it does three thousand cubic meters a day, that's about a month as well. Like 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 cranking that E F N back to two sixty when it's running is the equivalent of a Church Road well, just 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 to put put it in some context. If we could do both of those, we would have an extra two months of water last year. And 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 I'll tell you, like, we were all here. Come September, October, if somebody said there's, hey, we got another month of water, that's hugely valuable.
Sure.
So so that E F N, get on board with it. Now, my my simple, I'm not going to go on. The question, being on WASAC, I I have was continuously told by my friend Remco that after I brought that up four years ago, the S C R D was actively studying and pursuing the reduction of the E F N. That's been four years of actively pursuing the reduction of the E F N. If that is correct, today you reported, we're looking at the E F N reduction, we'll see what we need help with. I guess my question, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be.
Sorry, Tom, to me.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be. I'm not, I'm not trying to be obnoxious, my question is.
Tom, to me.
Okay. To you, to, to.
Yep.
If you've been, if you've been at it for four years and you think that you're close. Are, are, are you really close and have you got it down to, these are the four or five points? And have the four years of study, like, make me believe that we're close, I guess that's, that's my question.
That, that is a comprehensive question that you're probably not going to get a comprehensive answer to right now. Given that we don't have any infrastructure staff in the room anymore. I know that over the, over the four years, because I've been here for, at that time.
Yeah.
It has been worked on off the side, primarily off the side of somebody's desk.
That's right.
And so when we've had COVID, when we've had, you know, stage four and emergency situations, it's, it's continued to slip. I don't think it has had the priority that. We would have hoped that it would have had.
I agree.
I, I think is the short answer. And I know that the work that went into it last year was for an emergency reduction. So there wasn't any look at the long term benefits or the long term possible reduction, I think I've got that generally correct, CAO?
I think so, I mean, the, the E F N work is in the budget project status report, it. It dates back to twenty twenty, we did have a fifty thousand dollar budget and we, we hired a biologist, I think it was Dave Bates, who wrote a report back in the day, writing up the findings. So we, we have been working on this, I think. GM Brown was saying, I want to say it was at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, he was talking about the E F N to a degree and just how complicated it is. And it was requiring weekly applications to get E F N reductions week after week, but one thing I think that. While it's going to require additional discussion with the province and certainly would require support of She-Shell Nation as well. We're recognizing that the power of the E F N reduction is to do it early and to keep that water in behind the dam. And why, and, and reduce the E F N when the fish need it the least, not, not scramble to apply weekly for desperation E F N reductions when the fish need it the most. So I, I do feel like there's a fair bit of alignment in terms of approach and I'm hoping that the province will, will see that, like the siphons. It, it can be a tool that's powerful and can also be safe.
How's that for a non-answer?
Thank you, Mr. McKinley, you've obviously been reading my mail from four years ago. One last comment, not E F N, just a suggestion, so on the, on the, the water and the volumetric water billing. Which I was also involved in the discussions through WASAC. On our property, my wife is a gardener and we have thirty four hundred gallons of water in tankage that we collect off our roof. And it takes that kind of water to, to see you through a couple of months without cheating. And so it occurred to me this year, because we weren't having any rain. I found myself filling two of our tanks with my garden hose, just to have it, because I could see there wasn't any rain coming and we were potentially getting to a stage one situation. That got me to thinking, just like we have or used to have, a time during the year when you could. Put all your garbage and mattresses out for free and, and take them to the dump, it struck me that. When you get to the volumetric water billing, if you want to encourage people to have large tanks of water. Take, taken during the time when we're still in stage two. That maybe you should, you should think about something like in this two week period in February. You, you, you could, you can, you can take a certain amount of water and, and for this two weeks, it's, it's free, so that's the time to fill your thirty four hundred gallon tanks or something like that.
Little bit of an amnesty program or something to.
Well, that, but it, it would encourage people to take the water when we can afford to have them take the water as opposed to. They're just willing to pay for it and taking it when our lakes being run down, I, it was just a thought that came to me the other day.
No, that's a good point.
And that's it, that's it.
Thank you, Tom, always appreciate your efforts and appreciate you educating, educating everybody you come across about the E F N, because. I think it is an important win. All right, thank you very much, everybody, and we'll see you at the next meeting.